Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the recent rains. We thank you also for bringing Brother Pete back to be with us. We thank you, Lord, for all the things that you're doing. Today, within the sound of my voice, I'm going to ask everybody to touch someone. Not necessarily physically, Lord, but even with a smile. Because even a good smile will help ease the pain of many family needs. So, Lord, we ask also for favor for our commissioners present here this morning with today's agenda, that they would continue to do their best to hold down our tax base and at the same time provide the services that you know, Lord, that are needed for all the people here in Cameron County. We ask continued help to guard the children in the streets and the parks and the beaches, everywhere that they may play, that they will be guarded by you with a shield around them of safety and security. We pray all this today in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Puerto Rico, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. How are you this morning? And here comes a judge. All right, has anybody spoke yet?
No.
Okay. We've got three public comments signed up. One, Mary Helen Flores. Oh, okay, fine, thank you. And second, Stuart Diamond.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Stuart Diamond. I'm the chairman of the South Texas chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. I would just like to address a couple of things with you, particularly Agenda items 22, excuse me, C and I believe it's F. As to 22C, this is about y'all's executive session conferring legal counsel concerning the lease agreement with Isla Blanca to either consider termination or amendment to the lease. The reason I asked to address the court this morning is there is massive confusion on this. According to the media, the lease has been renegotiated, that's what's being said. But we don't know for sure. The development group is not really saying it's being renegotiated. I just requested the Commissioners' Court, if it has been renegotiated and there is a new agreement, I've not seen it on the Agenda items, I just asked that the people be informed of the new terms and conditions if there is a lease agreement. If there's not a renewed or an amended lease agreement, then we need to know that too because there's just massive confusion. The other thing I'd like to discuss briefly is that the F on the user fee for Isla Blanca Park. It says here that y'all are going to be confering with legal counsel concerning the status and possibility of an appeal from the administrative order from the GLO. I'm not aware, and I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to know, I know that a year ago the GLO sent a letter to the park system saying, "We need an accounting." This did not go through the proper channels. When we were here about two, three weeks ago, Mr. Mendez, I believe, stated to the Commissioners' Court about this item that it would be providing an accounting to the Commissioners' Court. Commissioner Garza very graciously offered to get me a copy of the accounting whenever it happened. This seems to indicate that there's already a decision from the GLO on this. Now, I'm not sure if there is or not, but just the way that the Agenda item is structured, it appears that there might be. I guess what I'm saying is I'd just like the people to be aware, if there has been an order, then what is that order of the GLO? If there hasn't been one, then if the status of it, and I believe that's what y'all are trying to find out, what is the status of the accounting? I know my time's running up, just very briefly, I think y'all realize how dear Isla Blanca Park is to the, not just people of Cameron County, the entire valley, the entire state, and actually the entire nation. And this entire issue and all ramifications of it have an impact upon many, many people. And we just ask that you very seriously look at all, all of the concerns there are. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, we have Tommy Giammaris. Want you to get your item on the agenda in that time, Tommy, or what?
No, it really wasn't an agenda item, Judge. I'm just mostly here to, I hope that y'all indulge me and let me brag a little bit about our staff at the Cameron County Juvenile Justice Department. And also, at the same time, before I begin, that related happy birthday to you, Judge. I understand you recently celebrated-
And a happy birthday to you too, sir.
Thank you.
Tommy and I share birthdays.
At your places-
Twenty-five each, or?
Double that.
Plus.
Yeah, double that plus, we'll leave it at that. At your places, you will find some information, Judge, Commissioners' Court members. One of those being a report, what we call the report card for our Juvenile Justice Department. It's got some bar graphs, colored bar graphs, that I think would interest you. About a year ago or so, the state, the auditors from the state went around and audited all of the Juvenile Justice Departments throughout the state of Texas. It was a very extensive audit. Part of the process was to create the benchmark for the future for Juvenile Justice Departments around the state. The results of that just came in recently, and basically, it's what I would call the report card about us. And if you will look at the bar graphs, the colored bar graphs, in the six of the seven categories that we all were scored on, there's two comparisons that are done. One is comparing us to other departments of our size or similar size, and then comparing us to all departments throughout the entire state. And if you will look at those and how we matched up to everyone else our size and everyone in the entire state, we did better than just about everybody in the entire state. And when the figures are all said and done, I would gamble to say that we were either one of the best, if not the best, according to that information, to that report card in the state of Texas. And I just, I come here to brag about the staff of the Juvenile Justice Department because they had everything to do with that. And in over the past three years of where we were and where we are, there's been some tremendous improvements in all of the areas that we're responsible for back to the state. So, I bring that before you, just simply to share that with you and let you know that there's some pretty good business going on at the Juvenile Justice Department, and especially in regards to how we're evaluated by the state of Texas.
When I was at school, in high school, I guess, if I were to make a comparison to what would happen, say, in a math class, for example, compared with the way your statistics show up, you would be the ones that messed up the curve.
Pretty much.
Which is, which is good for us.
Good for us, yes it is. We are, we are now recognized as a model department in the state of Texas, and so we're pretty proud about that. Also, at your places, we have the results of two recent audits. One is a Title IVE audit, those are federal funds, substantial federal funds that we get from the state, that actually, that come from the federal government, but they're routed through the state to us. And also, a program called the Special Needs Diversionary Program, which is our mental health program for those kids that need those services, which also involves a substantial amount of money that we receive from the state. And if you look at those two, it's highlighted, it's got scores, these were just very recently done, within the last couple of weeks, but we scored extremely well on that. And in particular, the IVE audit, we scored a 97.79, and that ended up being the best score in the entire state of Texas in terms of Juvenile Justice Departments, we just got notification of that. And we received a congratulatory letter from the senior federal program specialist as a result, and I've attached that to you there, congratulating us on the level of quality and work that we've done in that program to have scored so high. So, I've left that there at your place also. Also, at your places, I've left this, it's a newsletter that goes out, this is produced by our cadets at the boot camp, through their career technology classes that we offer the kids there, it's one of our vocational trade school programs that we offer. But they produce it basically themselves, and it tells a little bit about what's going on with them and their activities, and hopefully talks a little bit about the successes that they're having at the boot camp in regards to their academics and vocational training. I've included a little book called The Way to Happiness, this is a curriculum that's taught at both the detention and the boot camp. And those 21 precepts, there's actually a curriculum involved, and our staff are trained to do that, and they, when a kid walks into our facilities, they're immediately issued one of these, and they participate in that program. So, those are the things that kind of what we're trying to teach the kids in order to try to change some of their behavior and make them productive citizens of our community. Last, but not least, there's a little report, there's the chief's report, and it just gives you a summary of all the different programs and things that are going on in the departments. And it gives you some information there about some of the really good stuff that's going, you know, the audits are great, and I always tell the staff, I said, "Yeah, as long as we pass, I'm fine, I don't really care about being the best in that," but it's wonderful when you end up being the best. But what really, my main focus is what are we doing with the kids? And that's where I stress to the staff, you know, do okay in the other, but your focus is and your energy just need to be about what you're doing hands-on with the kids, and we're having a lot of success with that. A couple of things that I would highlight in the chief's report, we're running the youth center, it used to be the Olivera Boys and Girls Club, and now it's the Cameron County Youth Center. We're servicing about 100 kids a day there throughout the community with all kinds of recreational, social, academic programs. We've joined in a partnership with the city of Brownsville, they've been a great partner to us. We currently are still the only Juvenile Justice Department in the country that runs their own teen center, and that's been very successful for us, again, providing services to those kids in the area of academic, vocational, and recreational. We just started recently a new program called the Job Training Partnership Program, and I think Commissioner Garza had the privilege to actually see that in action for the first time. But where we partnered up with business people in the community, and we're actually placing our kids at those places to get hands-on employee training and get paid for it. And so, that is something, it's a pilot program that we started, it's so far knock on wood, being very successful. So, we're excited about the things that we can accomplish from that. And then it goes on to talk about a whole lot of other stuff, all the kids that we have gotten GEDs for and vocational trade school certificates, and we have kids at UTB now, we have kids at TSTC, and so, it's just a large group of things that are identified there that I think are really great things as far as what we're trying to do for the kids. And again, it's just to compliment, I'm here to compliment and commend the staff of the Juvenile Justice Department, that they have done an absolutely outstanding job for you guys, because we work for you. And also, just to brag a little bit also, I have my assistant chief here, Rose Gomez. And Rose is a very critical part of all this, very instrumental, she provides a lot of leadership for a lot of the parts of the department that has been recognized, and so I also thank her, commend her for all the work that she does and for you guys. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Can I say something, look, I know that we're not supposed to, but I just want to say that I'm very proud and very happy to be part of all this program, because I did see you twice on the Maury Povich Show and how successful you've been working. You had one show last year, and I think all of the juveniles that you had there which had drug problems, that wanted to have babies at the age of 12, stealing and things like that, have not come back. I was very impressed at the work that you did, and then you were re-invited just a few weeks ago back and did a fabulous job. I just wanted to know that it's nationwide and to be called back, it means that you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And Tommy, next time, don't put in public comments so we can discuss more, because a lot of successful things that all of us have experienced-
We all want to express ourselves in apologies for speaking out.
They're not supposed to contribute.
But I just wanted to correct you-
I just had to, I'm sorry.
I just want to correct you that we've always had great staff at the Juvenile Justice Department, we just needed good leadership.
Thank you. Thank you all, have a great day.
Okay, we're gonna go, Richard's gotta take off, out of town, and so I want to go into executive session. We're gonna go into the executive session, then we, our lawyer's gonna talk to us about some legal stuff, about this contract on the Isla Blanca thing. So, when we come out of executive session, we'll report to y'all where we're at, okay? So, I don't want you all to think that, you know, those comments that said, you know, we've been doing this stuff in secret, certain things that have to happen in executive session in state law, so we're gonna talk about it, but when we come out, we'll talk about it more with y'all, okay? All right, do you hear motion to go into executive session? My Commissioners, Tamayo Second, my Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All will be considered, we're now in executive session pursuant to VTCA GOV protection 51.372, 51.371. Motion to move back into executive session. Second, by Commissioner Tamayo Second, by Commissioner Benavides. We're just gonna take one item. This whole time, we've only discussed one item, so we're gonna go back into executive session later on, discuss the other items that we've got. But let me take item number 23C, possible action on confer with Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning March 15th, 2005 lease agreement on Isla Blanca Park is Laguna Madre enhancement group to consider termination or amendment of the lease.
You can make the motion and then-
I'd like to move that we terminate the lease.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion to terminate the lease, is there a, there's a second on the motion to terminate the lease?
Take a vote. You made a second, so you need to take a vote.
There's a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
I wanted some negotiation on it.
You can amend the motion? You want to make a motion to amend the motion?
Well, my amendment would be to exclude the Isla Blanca Park from the lease and allow our legal counsel to discuss the acreage, is it?
North of, north of the navigation-
North of the navigation-
Grant.
Exactly, that boundary. But definitely to exclude Isla Blanca Park from the lease.
And have all of Isla Blanca Park and all the property included in the Navigation District Grant released from the lease.
Released from the lease.
That's your motion to amend?
That's my amendment.
Is there a-
You're amending a termination? Do we not have a termination anymore, or are we amending the lease? I'm not sure what we have on the floor.
He's amending-
I know what you're trying to accomplish, but I'm not sure what we have on the floor. Well, we have a motion to terminate.
I think it would be cleaner if you've got a motion and a second to vote on that-
And start over.
And then start over. That way, we know what we're talking about. If that's the way all of, if it doesn't get terminated.
Well, I mean, she's got a motion to amend the lease, I mean, to amend the motion.
But John is correct, because it's a different, his motion was to terminate, and I'm wanting to-
I can withdraw my motion to terminate, yes, and make a motion to amend.
He's got, hold on, you withdraw your second on the motion to terminate, there's a motion on the floor to terminate.
My motion is to terminate the lease with the Laguna Madre Enhancement Group.
Period.
Period. And why don't you make clear to the public, David, why you're taking this position? Because I think it's a little bit misleading for you to say that you're making a motion to terminate. Your position has been that you don't like the idea, that you would like to continue with the development of Isla Blanca Park along the master plan that was approved, but what you don't like is that-
Well, Judge, I think, well, I don't, don't put words in my mouth, I think I can say what I don't like, and I don't think executive session should be repeated publicly.
Well, no, no, I think-
You're getting real misleading to these folks out here, you're making them believe-
No, I'm not misleading, I'm not misleading, Judge.
Then you tell them what you told us in executive session.
Well, I can tell them, I can tell people what I think.
Tell them.
And my motion-
Be honest with them.
I am being honest, that's the only thing I've known how to do.
Okay, tell them.
You know, the initial, I made the motion to approve the initial lease with Laguna Madre Enhancement Group under the pretense that that was gonna be a master plan for an area that included not only the amenities that were presented, but also included a casino that was gonna be legislatively done. If the legislator passed the law that allowed that casino to become a reality, then this plan would go into motion. What has occurred since then, legislation has not been passed, a casino is not part of what will occur on the island, and as a result of that, you know, now we're giving up master plan in the whole area and, in essence, leasing one small piece, which I really don't have a problem in doing if we RFP for that small area that now they're talking about wanting to develop, which is what in this motion was, okay? But it was very confusing from the beginning, and it was based on that area being anchored by a casino establishment. The law didn't pass, the law has not passed in two legislative sessions, as a result of that, you know, I will not support piecemealing that whole area into development.
So, just to make it clear, okay, because I think it's important that we make it clear the difference between what your position is and the difference between the position that Commissioner Tamayo is advocating, which is a position that I support as well, is that we all agree that the lease should not include any portion of Isla Blanca Park. All right?
Well, no, we don't all agree.
Yeah, well, not all of us, but at least Commissioner Tamayo, Commissioner Garza, myself and Commissioner Benavides agree that the lease should not include any development on Isla Blanca Park, okay? We all agree that it's all right to develop the land north of, except, well, I think we all agree on that one, the land north of the Navigation District track of land. We're doing that and other tracks of land even further to the north. That's the land that's immediately east of Schlitterbaum's, okay? And we've had discussions in the past with Schlitterbaum's about putting hotels out there. And we've had discussions, and we had on the agenda many times, about putting a hotel on that track of land north of the Navigation District track. We've run out for proposals on that several times, and in fact, we've even had lease agreements with developers on some tracks of land that they ended up not building through on. The difference of the position of Commissioner Garza and us is that he would like for us to take that, I think it's about a 25-acre track of land, and go out for proposals on that to allow other people to bid on a hotel there, and that he does not want to amend or have the lease changed just to allow the Laguna Madre Enhancement Group to develop the hotel in that track of land that's not part of the Navigation District. So, in essence, both motions would eliminate any development whatsoever on Isla Blanca Park, period.
And I have a little different take on it, I guess, because we all originally, as David talked about, were hoping and looking forward to the legislature passing casino gambling, and that would anchor a hotel and provide what we requested as a complete master plan development for that end of the island. That would provide everyone in the county, all the constituents, all the residents in the county and in South Texas and everywhere else, to come to a master plan resort destination where they would have access to the beach, they'd have clean restrooms and showers, they'd have lifeguards, they'd have more parking spaces than they have now available, they'd have things that participate and enhance what they do, for example, surfers, there would be a facility there to accommodate their needs, there would be an aquarium, there would be a lot of other amenities there that anyone could take advantage of if they wanted to, they didn't have to. And that's what the plan was, the idea of this being master plan was going to bring in lease money. There all over the county, people wanting parks in the county, and the monies from that was going to go into building, maintaining, and operating those parks throughout the county. We're talking about issuing bonds now for building some parks throughout the county without any idea where the maintenance and operation is gonna come from, or paying off those bonds is gonna come from. So, we're gonna have to rethink all those issues along with our rethinking of this. It's not a simple issue of a certain number of people being impacted, it's the entire county being impacted, and the future of the county being impacted by not having a development that is going to be, or would have been, a very nice resort destination for everyone to use, not exclusive to anyone.
Well, John, I agree with you that, and we are all concerned about where money's gonna come from, and you know that. We need it for road construction, we need to pick, to keep up the parks, we need it for a array of things. But the issue here is, where I differ with you, John, there's nothing that I'd want more than a resort that would bring in a lot of money for the county. But I differ with you in that it would be there for everyone to be able to enjoy.
And perhaps you haven't looked at the master plan, because it's on the master plan-
Yes, I have, I most certainly have, I most certainly have, because I know a large population of people that would not be able to afford to stay at that resort.
I'm not talking about staying at the resort, there are public areas there, there are picnic areas, there are the beaches there, just like the people-
Intense?
Where do they stay today? No?
No. The master plan increased public access.
It increased public access and parking and everything else, it certainly did. No question about it. The folks who have, you know, the media's not taking it upon themselves to present it, but it's been presented many, many times.
And Judge, may I say, do I have to say? I represent this area here, and fortunately, I've been in the hospital for about a month or so, but I've been-
Fortunately or unfortunately?
Well, I want to go back now. It's better with, even with the meals, you know? But I do want to say that in the past, as I was a city commissioner for the city of Brownsville, Mayor Protem there, and every time we had something major like this, I always favored the public. We recently, last year, I think, when the landfill was trying to open on Highway 100, we listened to the public and we all took a step back and we stopped it. That, I really don't care what the master plan at this point is, we've gotten so many negatives about all this stuff that I like to listen to what I represent, and they don't want it. I have a lot of friends that are, that park is just not the people here. I have a lot of friends that are sitting there in trailer parks that have not called me for a few months now, and they want to go fishing with, I mean, you know, so I like to pay attention to the public out there, and if they don't want it, and it's the only people that are protesting, where are the people that want it? I want to see the people here, they say, "We want this, and we want that," and I do want, I want an aquarium, I think John is right, you know, I think John, I mean, that's the way I look at it, because a lot of people look at it, but they're not, they're not talking about it. They want to have a casino, want to have this, but the only ones that we have here that do not want it are the people that are sitting here. And we don't have anybody that's talking positive about this. So, we have to look at those things, and I get, I got elected by those people and take a step back and see what we can do without letting anybody down, and hopefully we can come to an arrangement with Doyle Wells and his company and those friends of mine, you know?
And that's what I'm, and that's what I'm trying to do here, and I don't just, I read every email I get, I try and answer every single phone call that I get, and I don't change my mind because they're negative calls, I change my mind at times because I analyze what they're telling me, and if they're right, then I go ahead and try and do something about it. And that's what I'm trying to do with this motion, and I'd like to- And that's what I'm trying to do with this motion, and I'd like to re, to go back to this, now how are we going to handle this? Do we, you withdrew your second...
I withdrew my second because I thought, and I apologize for jumping the gun, that you know, the judge, somebody was supposed to say what you just said, you know?
Well, this is how I feel, and that doesn't mean that the rest of you feel that way, but I need to let the public know how I feel.
All right, hold on just...
My main goal is to save Isla Blanca Park and then go ahead and try and do something so that we can go ahead and negotiate with the group.
All right, well, there was a motion, and there's no second to that motion, there's a second, and there's a second, and there's a second, so then that motion fails and there's a motion now that you made.
And I'd like to read it, to make sure that it goes on record correctly. I'd like to make a motion to authorize council to draw a document releasing the property granted by Navigation District and to leave the property which is in the lease north of the property granted by Navigation District. We're excluding, we're going to exclude the Isla Blanca area.
From the lease?
From the lease.
Okay, let me just, and is there a second to that motion?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right, let me just state my position, because I'm the one that y'all write about in the paper all the time.
And maybe you need to explain that better so they'll understand. I know what I'm saying, but I want to make sure the public understands.
And, and, and just so you'll know, there's a couple of things, and I've tried to clarify this, but people want to hear what they want to hear and not hear what they don't want to hear. The position that I took at the beginning when this discussion occurred was that I thought that the lease was a contingent upon casino gambling, I mean, I really did. And I didn't, I signed, you know, two or 300 contracts a month, and they're handed to me by our lawyers, we've approved the contracts, and you don't read the fine print, and the fine print was not as what I believed it to be. But, you know, that's not to blame anybody but myself. I should have been paying more attention to that issue, and I agreed to vote for it because we all wanted to do something to generate more income for parks in Cameron County. It's not just about island parks, okay? You know, we, Cameron County has close to 100,000 people. We have, we are the third poorest community in the United States. Our kids need places to recreate. A lot of them don't go to Isla Blanca Park because their parents don't take them out there because they're busy working in the summer months and after school. They need a place to go play basketball, to go swimming, you know, at a pool, to play soccer, to play baseball in areas where they don't have access to those kinds of recreational amenities. And so, over the years, we've tried to develop community parks, that's what we call them, community parks. Community parks are parks that serve rural areas or areas where there is not access to parks for our children and our families. The problem is, though, as John mentioned, all our park system is completely funded through concessions and tolls, concession fees and tolls. There is no tax dollars that go into this. And so, at a certain point, you run out of money to pay for maintenance and operation and to pay for bonds to build these parks, because they maintain the existing parks, the money that we get to maintain Isla Blanca Park, it maintains the cleaning up and providing some security to the north, it maintains all the community parks, it maintains Dolph Tomei Park and the different parks that are also, that we have in the north, Atwood Park and Andy Wood Park. And those operations are not easy to pay for. At the end of the day, we barely have enough money to pay for whatever we've got today, not considering the need to expand and to provide parks to a lot of unserved areas in our community. And so the thought that we had, as John mentioned, and David mentioned, and everyone has mentioned here, is that if we could generate, if the state of Texas was going to pass casino gambling, which we were told that that was a distinct possibility, and they were going to designate a location to be South Padre Island, why shouldn't it be on property that the county owns so that we could get the income for that to help pay for those parks? That was the whole mindset that we had when this whole discussion occurred three years ago. And it was in the newspaper numerous times, there was discussions, there was articles over and over and over. This was not done in secret, and I know people have said that it was done in secret, but I promise you, this is on TV, on Channel 60. We put, we're in the internet, and our website shows that we've got, our agendas are posted. We let people know what we're doing. We fax our agenda to all the news media in Cameron County, we let them know what we're doing, and this was discussed repeatedly over a period of more than...
Press releases, which some of the press chose not to...
We issued press releases. It was discussed over a period of more than a year, more than a year. No one said anything, and it passed. Until this issue came up and we examined it a little more closely, we, some of us came to the conclusion that this was not a good idea, that since it, since it was going to leave the perception, even though there may be questions about that, that the park was not going to be as accessible to the working people of this county, that it was something that created a lot of anxiety among those folks who traditionally, over the years, used to work, whether it was the beachgoers, whether it was the surfers, whether it was the people that were at the trailer park. It created a lot of anxiety. And we listened, and, you know, we sat down with the developers about two or three months ago, and we said, you know, we can't do what you guys want to do because the public is just not going to tolerate. And so we started the, and this was initiated by me. After I had discussions with the commissioners, I sat down with Richard and I said, you know, Richard, you know, we really need to go back to this thing and see if we can make it more palatable to the public.
Identify who Richard is, was in my number?
Richard Burden, our attorney. And so, once we did that, he went back and he discussed it, and, you know, people were on vacation, and it just took a long time to get, from the point of my discussion with him and their attorneys, to the point where we were in the process of drafting an agreement of some sort that would deal with it. Well, y'all and everybody that I talked to, like Pete said, there was nobody talking for the park. Well, they were talking for the park, for the development, but they weren't put in the papers, the articles in the paper, and they weren't coming to Commissioners' Court, you know, or anything like that. They just weren't making any noise. And so, I sat down with Richard last week, and I told him, I said, "Just need to get the park out of this whole lease. We need to negotiate a new lease or a change to the lease where we take..."
Addition.
Yeah, an addition to the lease where we just take the entire park out of the lease." And so he started that negotiations last week and culminated, it culminated yesterday. It's a little bit different than what we've been negotiating, but it's, the long and the short of it is it takes all of Isla Blanca out of the lease. And the proposal that was made by, the motion that was made by Commissioner Tamayo, in essence, is what we've been negotiating for the last week or so. So that's, that's my position. I think it was a bad idea. It tells you, we listen, we're not walking around not paying attention to what people tell us. We believe that in a democracy, that's what it's all about. When you make a decision, which we thought we had made with a great deal of discussion in these meetings, that no one objected to, that turns out not to be a good decision, then we're willing to change our decision to fix it, and that's what we're going to do today. So, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Judge, I just want to make sure and mention one thing. The master plan that we had looked at did not destroy Isla Blanca Park. It enhanced Isla Blanca Park. It made it better than what it is today. And, you know, I mean...
Provided more access.
It provided more access for people that, you know, I mean, it was not creating a resort for the rich, you know, as it's perceived to be. And I, and I think that the media has played on a particular angle of this, you know, and I, I supported that particular, just like all of us did at the time, because we knew that it was going to enhance it. It was not a matter of saving, or it's not a matter of saving, the park is saved, the park is not going anywhere, you know? The, one of the concerns that I have by not using a master plan of some sort for that park, and I think we should develop as a county, some kind of master plan going the route we're going, to make sure that we don't do things that hurt access by anyone to the park, you know? And, you know, I support what you said, I don't have a problem with doing it. My only concern with this is that I feel now that the Laguna Madre Enhancement Group is going to have the right to use a piece of property that other people won't have a right to be able to consider turning in a proposal for, because that's what it is. They're going to be utilizing that property that's behind Jeremiah's, to the coast...
Behind, I mean...
Schlitterbaum?
To the east of Schlitterbaum.
To the east of Schlitterbaum, you know? And other people won't have an opportunity to even be considered, you know?
And I think this has brought us, and we learn, all of us learn from experiences. Whenever we start talking, and I agree with you and with the rest of the commissioners and the judge, that we do need a master plan, but I think we need to look at a process to follow in developing a master plan. And I think that goes back to, I use advisory committees in my precinct, and so I have direct interaction with them, some kind of process where we get more of the public involved in having a say before we start making decisions here. So we've learned, I've learned, and it's not something I should have known already because I use it in my own precinct. I blame myself for not being more cautious as to the process we were using in making that decision. And my motion is the best motion that I can come up with to correct something that did not take the right process, and I hope I've made myself clear.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody want to say anything?
What can the public be assured of that in the future, that if casino gambling is passed in the state of Texas, some future development as according to the last master plan that was put forward, that that won't happen in the future? Say, for example, in three years from now, four years from now, they pass casino gambling in the state of Texas, that we're not going to be back revisiting this whole issue in the future.
And you're referring to Isla Blanca Park?
Yeah, well, I think that the commitment, what we're telling you by doing this is that there's not going to be a casino in Isla Blanca Park, not as long as any one of us are here.
If somebody else is?
If somebody else comes here and says, you know, that they disagreed with what we did, and gets the three votes to do it, and that, I can't control that. I'm telling you, in Isla Blanca Park, in the boundaries of Isla Blanca Park, as long as I'm your county judge, there will not be a casino built, period. And I can't tell them, do you any clearer?
That's not to say that it could be on private property anywhere else on the island.
But you're referring to Isla Blanca Park?
Right, yeah. I'm just, well, we just want to make sure that, you know, because those are possibilities out there.
Our group is not against development of the island, our group wants to keep a public park, a public park.
Right. But you know also that everything from the, from the Isla Blanca Park to the north, that's not Isla Blanca Park. We own property from where the chapel by the sea is, a little bit further south to the north, that's not part of Isla Blanca Park. If we, you know, that, and that continues to be in the lease, and there's, in that lease, there's discussions about if a casino ever happens and that kind of stuff, but that's not Isla Blanca, Isla Blanca Park doesn't include any bit of Isla Blanca Park, and, you know, we are committed not to doing anything like that in Isla Blanca Park, okay? I want to make that clear. I don't want you to think, well, you know, we're, there's a line there, and we're not crossing that line from here on out.
And that line is a property that was needed to the county by the Brussels Navigation District for a park.
And as far as I'm concerned, I would like to continue to work some deal with the Enhancement Group, but not in Isla Blanca Park.
Well, let's...
Especially, but let's not go there right now.
Don't go there, okay? We've got this and that's it.
Yeah, let's get this done.
Yes, sir.
My name's Dalton Lee, I'm from Harlingen. Each of these people, right here in a t-shirt, for example, and this young lady over here, basically represent 1,100 people of these at this point, in this juncture. The reason why most of this was foreign as far as information for your consumption was that people weren't exactly concise about how they were trying to get your attention. It's not that we were against the commissioners or the judge on a personal level. This was strictly about making sure that Isla Blanca Park stayed for in perpetuity, a public park for every, everybody, not just for a specific group of developers. And now, everybody here, we've heard everybody's opinion, and we respect your opinion is what we're trying to tell you. What we're concerned about in the long haul is to make sure that this park does stay a public park in perpetuity, improvements to it, but not further commercial development to it. That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to stay to. At the same time, we understand your concerns for trying to end up providing recreational facilities for other parts of the county. We understand that, and we will, and we will do what we can do in order to help you reach those goals.
I want to make sure I get your phone call.
Yes, sir.
Your phone number.
That's not a problem, and I like your concept, and I'm sure they'll agree with me, that we like your concept of having some type of community input in the planning stages or something like this. None of us, let's put it this way, we have a lot of other things to do. This became an issue for us because it was something near and dear to our heart, and we were concerned about the future generations not being able to utilize this park like we have when we were kids. There are tremendous improvements to this park over the last 20 years, where it has become more accessible to the public and a larger variety of people. What we have seen in the development of South Padre Island as a whole is that it's become more and more a development for people who have more affluent lifestyles than it has for the people who are locals. That has been our concern about this park from day one, and we applaud you and your efforts to step back and make a decision that truly will impact future generations for the protection of this park, and I want to go on the record on that. But in the same sense, we're willing to end up working with you to try to help you achieve your goals to increase parks and find some type of a funding mechanism that keeps our county out of the gambling business or the development business, so to speak. We're more than willing to do whatever it takes to help you do that. And if it requires being involved, involved in each of y'all's precincts or however, Mrs. Tamayo, what did you say your group was a?
Precinct 4.
Okay, something of that nature, then that's what we'll do. And most of us aren't basically politically minded people, so to speak. We just became that because we saw no other avenue to influence the outcome of the situation. And that's one of the reasons why we became a nonprofit organization, was to end up having some type of long haul influence on keeping this situation... up having some type of long haul influence on, on keeping this situation for a public purpose, a public recreational purpose. And listen, we want to, I just, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I, I, I'm a, I know these guys really well, all of them. They really, uh, we all appreciate the position that you have taken on this subject. Now, I don't know all of the, I don't really understand exactly what your amendment is at this point, because I'm not looking at a map, okay? But, but I understand the...
It's going to save your park. It's going to save the park.
And, and, and we understood, we basically know where Isla Blanca Park is, and, and I just don't know exactly what, what your proposition is on, or your position on this other part is. But, the key issue to us is, we're not against an individual commissioner or the judge, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to, the last time that I, I had a chance to address the court, was to apologize to the judge that with our learning curve, we actually sent the first one thousand postcards with the, "Don't, don't mess with the park, and here's our, what we use the park for," and that's lying, to him and him alone, because we didn't realize that we really needed to talk to all of you.
That's right.
So, Judge, I want to go on the record saying, I'm sorry you got the most heat out of this, this wasn't a personal thing, it was a learning curve for us. So, at the same time, we're willing to, to work on this issue with you, and do whatever we can do and how we can influence people.
I want, let me, let me interrupt you just for a second. One of the things that you might be able to help us on is this, is, Mr. Stuart Diamond came up here a little while ago and talked about the, the four dollar fee that's, that, that the land commission offers, wants us to lower down to one dollar until they review our cost. If our fee goes down to one dollar, it's going to destroy our ability to provide operation and maintenance at the park.
We're, we're concerned about that.
I mean, and so it doesn't really help, I think what I'd like to see is y'all's support with, for us on the need to have that fee, because that fee is used to operate our parks, and to clean them, and to, and to pay for bond proceeds, uh, uh, debt retirement on the bonds that we've taken out to fix and build parks and so forth. So, it's not good for us, it would be, it would be disastrous for us to be forced down to a, a one dollar fee. I, I understand that four dollars is a lot of money to use the park, but it's a four dollars per car, right? And, and so, it, we believe that it's something that helps us continue to maintain that park and, 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 you know, I mean, I've been out there, and, you know, I see how it gets trashed out sometimes, and, you know, I mean, we're out there trying to fix it and, and, and repair it and clean it constantly, and even then, we've got to bring in prisoners sometimes to do it because, you know, we don't have enough money to pay people to do it. So, help us out with that, that would be really, really good, because we really do need some support on that, and talk to, if you could talk to our land commission, because he's, he's, I mean, you know, we, you know, ten years ago, we, we increased it to four dollars, eight years ago to four dollars at the recommendation of our Parks Director at that time, not knowing that there was something else that had to go along with that, because he just said we needed in order to be, be able to pay for the operation, and we, we understood how important that was. So, we, you know, we don't make, you know, at the end of the day, if you look at our books in the Parks Department, we spend everything that we bring in, and there is no fluff in that, it's, it's all, it's as tight as you can get, um, uh, so that we can provide the services that we do, and we need more money to, just to maintain the parks that we got. I mean, we, you know, there's, we have a swimming pool in Santa Maria, and a swimming pool in Pachito, that we have to go in there and redo completely, because they're, they're not, they're, they're, there's some serious problems with the swimming pool, that's where the kids out there, take a drive out to, to the river, you know, in the summer months, there's nothing for these kids to do. So, they go to this pool and they get in there, and I mean, it's like, you know, I think we charge them, what, fifty cents or something like that to go in there? The pools are, they need each of them, they need, we need, put in about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total to repair these pools. We don't have any money, you know, we're out of money. One of the things that we're going to talk today about is issuing some bonds to pay for that, uh, and to be, and those bonds are going to be, uh, uh, paid for out of tax dollars. In other words, we're having now to resort to tax dollars to pay for maintenance, to, to repairs to some of our, our parks, because we just don't have enough money left in the funds that we generate from the concessions and the fees.
And a problem, there, there sometimes ends up being a problem with that too, because the bonds generally will take ten, fifteen, twenty years to pay, and we will have used up that money, and the repairs will be needed and be made again, and we haven't paid for the first time, and so it creates a problem, and taxes are what pays for the bonds.
So, that's, that's where we're at. It's not, I mean, you know, somehow it's presented that we're, you know, making all this money by charging four dollars a person to go into the parks, and it's not even enough. But we haven't increased the toll to the parks in...
Eight years.
Eight years. I mean, it's been four dollars for a long time. So, anyway, thank you for being, thank you for your participation. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll be brief, and, and I want to just make this, to underscore what's being done here, I have in my hand, and reinforce and clarify, and for the record, I have a copy of the events that gave the Isla Blanca Park to the county as I understand it, and I just want to quote, I think this is a cornerstone of what we're, what's, we're standing on today, is that hereby, this, I would say, "The land above is scribed and conveyed, hereby shall be used for public park purposes only and for no other purpose." I believe, you know, that's the cornerstone, it may have been a point that if they missed an easy understanding of good business, but certainly for, for future administrations going into the future, we need to remember this. We can also be cautious that we don't destroy the essence of what makes Cameron County a great place to live, with, you know, unchecked development. I've looked in places such as Detroit, where it's really an enve, a wonderful environment that been destroyed by unchecked development, and it's very, very interesting to see, to see this process working here in Cameron County, where we're taking care of the essence of what makes Cameron County a great place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll be very brief also. I believe this contract should be totally terminated, so it can't come back later and bite us in some way, and then if you want to negotiate with other parcels, then start negotiations on those, so that everything will be yours.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing them out by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, real quick with bus, I know y'all need to get going, and then I'm going to take my guy, my financial guy up here.
I'm Wayne Ray.
Item number eight?
Eight.
Consideration possible in Cameron Park central cultural, a possible pickup point, a new bus service by the Bravo Urban System to initiate the boy shuttle service to compel anthills from Cameron Park in order to expand public transportation, to target a colonial system.
This is what we have discussed.
Is this going to cost us any money to do this?
What they're... No, it's just going to cost us...
What they're doing is, is instead of using a pickup point that they were talking about in front of Lopez, I'm sorry, in front of Vela.
In front of Vela.
This will be, move the pickup point to in front of Centro Cultural.
So, it's, it's really, we had already discussed this, except that you're...
Pickup point.
Moving the pickup point.
There's some issues.
The pickup point is going to be, this is a, an express shuttle that's going to be for the employee, for the employees that work at MFELS in Cameron Park, right in front of Centro Cultural. It also reduces the tra, the, it's going to be a drop off point for those employees to pick up that, to pick up that express shuttle, and it's twice a day.
No more money. Well, the, the reason I asked her to come before us is because, one, we just rebuilt streets, they will not accommodate pickup points for large buses, but they're not going to be using a large bus, and I wanted to clarify that they weren't going to be using large buses. And at some point, they'll shuttle, shuttle trucks.
Yeah, the shuttle bus, the twenty-five passengers. We're going to start off with that. If it gets really successful, then we're going to have to come back and come up with a plan.
Use two shuttles. What their, what their plan might be in the future would be to build a concrete pad and a, a shelter for the people to wait, but I just wanted to be sure that we were on track.
It's not costing us any money.
No money.
No, not at this time. MFELS is subsidizing that particular shuttle.
Okay, just sort of going.
Right. Make a motion for approval.
There's a motion, and a second, my commissioner, we've been waiting for a discussion, all those in favor, sing them out by state and I.
Aye.
Both the motions carries. All right.
Thank you.
Let me go to, um, five. Consideration possible adoption of a plan of finance for Cameron County, Texas Obligation Series Two Thousand Six.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Your hair's turning white.
My little, the little kid that we, the little twenty-eight-year-old, no, what, how old were you when, when, ten years ago?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. You were thirty years old, weren't you?
He was, he was just a kid, and he still is.
I'm still a kid. Good morning, members of the court and judge, my name is Noe Nohosa, the Noe Nohosa and Company serve the county's financial advisor, with me is Gavino Swatello, with our firm too, and, uh, I guess we can reserve the personal comments for a little later.
Yeah, I want to talk about that, you don't know.
I thought I recognized you.
But in any event, I've just given you, uh, basically a, a little packet of, of information, your staff has shared with us the intent of the court to, to fund about five million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of park improvements, and, and the intent is to proceed in, in borrowing funds to, to, to fund for those needs. Uh, we've met with the county auditor, we met with the fully budget director and the judge's staff, and what we've given you here is somewhat preliminary, I don't think, I don't expect to walk out of here with, with, with an intent to, to proceed with this, but I want to sort of establish some sort of a, a debate on the matter and tell us which way you'd like to go. The very first page in the little packet that we've shared with you, basically tells you, illustrates what, what the conditions are of your mortgage payments on current debt, and as you can see, on the top right-hand corner, says pre-two thousand and six issues. Basically, this is where we are before we anticipate to sell any, any debt during the calendar year of all six. You're, uh, and this is mainly and only property tax-supported or property tax-enhanced issues, bond issues, that we've sold with the name of Cameron County, Texas. The very second column from left to right is your net asset values. In two thousand and six, we had about eleven point six billion dollars as, as, as the collateral behind this debt. We project that it may go up to about twelve point one eighty-three. I think you're in, in the course of, of finding out what those preliminary values may be in, in the course of the next couple of weeks, I think, we have better numbers for that, but as you can see, we're using a five percent increase versus, versus last year's. Uh, your existing mortgage payments on, on property tax-supported debt are about five million eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, as you can see in column D, S and David, row number eight. That will be your mortgage payment during fiscal year oh-seven. Uh, this year is five million eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, about a couple of thousand dollars less. It's important to note, uh, that the county annually, I believe, enters into leases, into equipment leases, and I don't think that the oh-seven year, uh, based on my conversation with Mr. Yates, includes the new leases that you may have incurred during the course of this year, and those leases have historically been paid by, by the tax rate out of the debt service fund. So, notwithstanding that this assumption, if in fact there are lease payments contemplated for next year in oh-seven, for leases that you may have incurred during the course of this year, then this scenario will drop. I mean, this scenarios will be, uh, irrelevant in terms of, of what we're trying to achieve here. But let's just say that everything stays the same, and, and we'll, this will, Mr. Yates here pretty shortly about confirming that, those assumptions, then we go forward. Now, column I and J, you can put a little number one on top and number two on top. Number one is basically, uh, uh, the park-supported debt. Uh, when you adopt the budget for parks and for general fund, the park system basically in its operating budget or in its budget, makes payments to, uh, to the county's debt service fund of about four hundred and six thousand dollars in oh-six, it will contemplate to make payments about four twenty-seven in oh-seven, four twenty-nine in oh-nin, in oh-eight, then it drops to two sixty-nine. So, the park has existing debt that for all practical purposes will be totally depleted or non-existent after two thousand and eleven. So, when you've given us a directive to attempt to come up with a plan of finance to fund park improvements, what we've taken advantage of is the fact that after two thousand and eleven, you practically have no mortgage payments for park system debt. So thus, if, if in fact as we go forward, that's something you appreciate and you like to do, then what we're going to try to do with, with this financing is to ramp up those payments to be equal to what you currently pay on park system debt, that's about four twenty-nine.
In two thousand and eleven.
In two thousand and eleven and beyond. Uh, well, actually, as you can see in two thousand and nine, Commissioner, you've got two sixty-nine payments, it'll be brought up to four twenty-nine also. Then, column J, you see the bridge debt, and basically what that is mainly is the bridge financing of the Los Indias Bridge. And, so thus, although we have pledged property tax values as a way of, of securing the loan for that bridge system, uh, it is being paid by the bridge system. So, what you see there is the corresponding mortgage payments by the bridge system to offset what you would, what you would otherwise have to levy from property taxes. So, in column K, you'll see what your real net mortgage payment is from property taxes. And as you can see on column L, you're currently in two thousand and six, or at two ninety-three, shy of three cents of your total tax rate goes for the payment of, of tax-supported debt. In oh-seven, uh, it will stay around the same neighborhood. Uh, I can tell you that, that in working with the county auditor's office and your staff, judge, and, and budget office, somehow, there's been a, a real, you know, attempt to, to, to take on, on the debt service tax rate and, and put whatever else of the total tax rate into other, into other areas, such as general fund, uh, and, but, but when you look at the mechanics of, of what you need to levy, if in fact ninety-four percent are your collections, you really need to be at three oh-nine or at two ninety-three, and it is just a function of, of how you manipulate certain funds within the debt service fund and where the pressures are in other parts of the operations of the county. Having said all that, go to the next page, and then you go over to column, uh, to row number, uh, the, row number three, column D, S and David, and that's basically what has been asked of us to, to attempt to identify. How do we go about financing five million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars? Well, in order to get there to the five million seven thirty-five, if you go to column E, row number thirty-three, you'll find that you have to issue about five million nine twenty to find, to fund five million seven thirty-five. The difference between the one on top and the one at the bottom is that you would have to incur for cost of getting credit enhancement, like bond insurance, paying us, paying lawyers, paying Attorney General's Office, or feeling a deal like this, I think is about twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. So, that's, that's what, what comes into play. Again, the same assumptions for property values are there, row number five, column B of ninety-five percent collection, still as the front page. Projections as far as growth in column C, I think are pretty conservative, but that's always been our, our nature in terms of how we go about projecting. Then, if you go to column E, anytime we sell bonds, it is not an uncom... Then, if you go to column E, anytime we sell bonds, it is not uncommon practice to manipulate principal payments if we have to, in case there's pressure regarding how you, how fast you'd like to pay this debt. And if in fact, what you want to do is to minimize impact on the tax rate that is associated with paying debt, that's the only thing we can do, is move our principal to about '09. You will still pay the debt within the 20-year amortization, but the impact on the tax rate, as you can see in column M, is less than a half a cent. It would be four tenths of a penny. You will have to dedicate, not necessarily raise, but dedicate out of your total tax rate in order to pay what we believe is a portion associated with having to become out of the property taxes. Because when you look at column I, if you see the payments of $429, $485 in 2008 coming out of the park fund, that payment will stay the same. That mortgage payment will then stay the same to mirror what your annual payments at the highest levels were from the park fund. And thus, that $429, if you go to the next page, you'll see even though you paid $429 in column T, SNCOM, you still have to come in column U, you'll see that a certain portion of the mortgage payment for this new bonds will have to come out of property taxes. So not all of it will come out of the park system fund. Some of it will come from property taxes. And then the next column, column V, SNVICTOR, is basically the value of what the $296 is in terms of a tax rate. Now, what we like to do is not, what we like for you to consider is not case A, where you postpone principal. What you want to do, in our opinion, is do what you've always done, and that is issue debt with level annual payments and not postpone principal payments. I think it's always been this course practice to be pretty conservative in its way of borrowing for funds. So if you look at column G in the next page on case B, which at the bottom is page four out of five, your payments in a scenario like this are, your mortgage payments are going to be about $460,000 on average. You're now postponing principal and you're paying just as you should, but the impact on dedicating the tax rate instead of being four tenths of a penny is closer to six tenths of a penny. So this is very marginal impact on it, but one that is slightly higher. We're running interest rates, as you can see on row four, that are about 30 basis points of current market conditions. If you read the paper tomorrow, you're going to find that interest rates, despite there's been a concern for rising, there are a lot of issues around the world that are affecting interest rates. We think interest rates are stable within this neighborhood over the course of two, three months. In fact, even maybe four or five months. But notwithstanding that, if rates do rise beyond our projections, then there'll be a higher cost associated with that.
What column is that? What column are you referring to there?
I'm referring to the column, row number four of any of the big spreadsheets, and you'll see current market rates plus 30 basis.
Plus 30 basis points.
Exactly. So we're using rates of 494 today. If you were to go to the market, you could easily probably get a loan for about $450 to $460.
So you're a little higher.
Yeah. Of course, because we're just in a preliminary discussion, I suspect that between now and the time you execute, you know, rates will be different. And if we bust through that line then.
You actually have on line item five.
Yes.
The date of the interest rate is next month. Seeing the future of the crystal ball.
Eight, one. Yeah.
August 1.
But still, I mean, it's 30 basis points over today's market. And that's where we're at.
Let me ask you this. What would we have to get to? What is the most that we can borrow if we delay the principal payments along that one scenario that you gave with the 42?
The case A?
Yeah. What is the most that we can borrow with a delay of principal payments that would have no effect on the taxes, the amount of money that need to be paid out of taxes?
I would say shy of $5.2 million.
All right. So if we delay the principal payment and borrow $5.2 million for parks, then that should have no tax consequence?
That's right.
Now, the other question I had was, in my discussions with you a couple of weeks ago, you said that there was some unrestricted money in the park fund that doesn't have to do with their standard reserves, some million dollars on some metals that you had identified there, that you were trying to find out where that money was programmed for, what was it going to be used for? Have you been able to make a determination on that yet? Because if there's unrestricted money, money that's not reserved out, but it's just sitting there in the park fund, why do we need to borrow money to build? Why can't we use that unrestricted money? We don't need it for reserves to do some infrastructure improvement, to add to the $5.2, let's say we decide to go with, that would give us a total of close to $6.2 million for park improvements. I think the list is $5.7, so we got, of course, we don't even have to use the entire million. We could use, you know, probably five, a half, half of that, leave the other half in there. Is that money there or?
At the expense of, well, I still, I will beg for not giving you a direct answer on that because I really haven't checked whether that million dollars is there or not, but I'm assuming that if there's any money in that park fund of that magnitude for that matter, that... What's the operating budget for the park fund? About $4 million in change? I think, just like the county's general fund, judge and members of the court and county's bridge fund, I would, in lieu of the fact that the main generator of revenue is out at the island, that whatever funds are there, they be left alone and be recognized as your savings account to deal with in case of adverse weather conditions that may affect operations there. I think that if you're going to do, I mean, again, that's something that is coming off my head as I'm speaking to you, I have to address that fund, but if there are restricted funds right now, if there's a policy of maintenance savings account in that fund, and on top of all that, if you have that there, on top of that, there's a million dollars, then I will make a recommendation, hey, here's a million dollars more that you can use on top of the loan. But if there's not, if the only million dollars that are there are savings within the park operating fund, I would urge you to just leave that money alone because, notwithstanding a big hurricane out there, you really want to have those parks in prime condition to continue operating after a disaster occurs or whatever, so.
We don't know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer to that.
That's what I was trying to find out.
Does anybody have the finances for the park? Javier? Javier?
I'll from the auditor call this here. I mean, it's a big river to the financial statements, but I believe that the amount that's there is the unreserved fund balance, because there are reserves set aside for the debt service and reserves set aside for operating expenditures. I believe, I mean, I can't.
So that's.
But there is a part, it's $950,000.
That takes care of what?
At 9:30,05. But that is, yeah, unreserved fund balance, kind of like the fund balance in the general fund.
That was at a year ago, Javier?
Sorry?
That was at a year ago?
Yeah, that's.
Where does it stand today? Where does it stand today?
Yeah, that I can answer that right now.
Well, I think, Rob, you told me that there's no information provided, but what we're doing here right now is just a discussion. We're not making a recommendation. So off the top of your head, do you know what the parking system, park system requires to operate? Is it about $4 million?
I think it's about $3.5 million.
$3.5 million. So a million dollars is about a third of the park fund operations.
But he just now said, I thought what, you know, I don't understand some of these things, the way they, the distinctions that are made, but I thought that Javier just said that there is reserves out to support the bond obligations and to support operations, right?
Right.
What are your reserves? What are your reserves to support operations?
Of course, this is again at 9:30,05. Based on the financial statements, there was reserves for debt service of $507,000 and a reserve for operating $724,000.
That doesn't include that unrestricted reserve?
Correct. These are reserved funds. This doesn't include the.
So that's on top of the million that you talked about, the unrestricted million?
I mean, whether it is or if it's not, let's just say this, if it's there, judge, that's a million dollars that you can have a prerogative of using on top of the loan. But if it's not, if in fact.
Yeah, I didn't think that. I just was trying to find out if it's there because, you know.
I don't want to get plugged up into this issue.
I agree that, you know, the next item on the agenda that we've got right now is to transfer some of the settlement money over to the reserves, and I'm going to recommend that we transfer $4 million. We lost a significant amount of money when our jails closed and part of our lawsuit had everything to do with the fact that we lost all this money because they poorly constructed this jail. And I want to get your input as to whether or not that's a good idea to transfer from a settlement over to reserves. I believe that it's appropriate because of the fact that that's one of the reasons why we had such a significant drop in our reserves. And also, you know, we had a significant drop because of the revenue projections that included SCAP money in it that we didn't get, which is all related to these jails and so forth. So, but by the same token, it doesn't make any sense to me to tax the people of Cameron County to add reserves when you don't need reserves. In other words, it seems to me that it's better to ease the tax burden on the people of Cameron County to ensure if you've got money that you've set aside for infrastructure projects to use that money instead of borrowing money and paying interest on it, right? That's kind of how I understand the importance of having reserves, but I also believe that you can't go a little too far to where you're placing the burden on the taxpayers by doing that. So what is your, I mean, what is your take on that?
Well, my take on that is, as you would expect, a financial advisor, not yours, is, you can never have, as far as we're concerned, judge, enough reserves. I think that it behooves you to make every effort to preserve reserves, and when they are depleted, that you restore them. And I think that as uncomfortable as this may be on the rest of your colleagues and the entire court as a political body, as a policy decision body, is you've got a credit rating of a very adequate and nice category. And when you get to that kind of a rating, you're expected, there are standards of credit that are, that puts you at par with the other 254 counties across the state of Texas. And when you're at the level that you're at of an A, then there are basically very bottom-line benchmarks that you must sustain while during the course of operating county government. The beauty thing about this county is the fact that you have a bridge system that is very sound, that generates significant amounts of revenues that basically offset what otherwise you have to generate in property taxes. You have a park system that is also in a good condition, but when it comes, I mean, you're going to have to make decisions whether we like them or not, that have to correspond to preserving those benchmarks. If in fact, you want to stay at the category rating that you've always been accustomed to.
What is the benchmark per se? A three-month operating system?
Two months.
Two months.
Two months, between 10 to 15%, basically, actually more like 15%. Now, let me tell you something. The state of Louisiana, we were involved for the first time a couple of days ago on an offering for the state of Louisiana. It was a 250 million dollar offering, and we participated as an underwriter there. And since Hurricane Katrina, any credit along the coast is now being looked at as a riskier investment, as an investment, and I'm talking about a municipal credit, not a corporate credit, not a credit like yours and mine in terms of individualized, but as a municipal credit, rating agencies and insurance companies, those who provide you with credit enhancement, look at you now, since you have proximity to the coast, as a riskier credit. And thus, the benchmarks are now going higher, which in essence, judge, go contrary to what has been a pretty practical practice, and that is, well, let me, if I can, if I have too much reserves, let me go out and depend on them. I think from our perspective, what we need to do for your benefit is identify what those real reserves are and then come and tell you what those reserves are and what their conditions of those are, because at this point, we don't, we haven't had that benefit of discussing them. Not because, not because nobody wants to cooperate with us, it's that we haven't had that opportunity to do so, and we're not prepared to tell you how those reserves par with the various funds that you have, but also, once we identify what those are, how they compare to other counties. I can tell you, which is the next item on the agenda, that your fund balance, the reserves, the savings account, and they're unrestricted, by the way. Restricted reserves is one thing. Unrestricted is another thing. And the unrestricted is the one that we're talking about, is that although they're unrestricted, there are benchmarks out there from credit holders, from credit rating agencies, that you must preserve. Although they're unrestricted, there one should keep them unrestricted. But you need to establish a policy, and we do this with a lot of credits out there. And right now, for example, and I'll give you this page, since this sort of one agenda goes with the other. That's a summary, basically, a summary page of your condensed statement of operations in your general fund. And you'll find in 2001, what your revenues were then, $12,300,000. In 2002, about $30,500,000, $50,303,000, $60,304,000.
This is a bridge system only.
What you handed to us? I got the wrong page, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a bridge.
Let me ask you, going back to the unrestricted reserves, I mean, I don't think there's any question that we need to supplement in the reserve fund based upon the losses that we incurred from the jail and then this last year's revenue projections that came out wrong. What I liked, the question I had was, how much of the, how much unrestricted reserves are there in the bridge system right now?
If you look at the bottom line in that page.
Okay, where are we on four, I mean, five or six? What did you die up? Call six.
Kind of jumping back.
Both? Well, let's call six.
You can call six, consideration possible. We have a couple minutes.
Are we going to do anything with five?
Okay, let me stop for a second. Let's go back to five. My recommendation, based upon what you told, is with respect to, I'd like to find out what the deal is with that million dollars unrestricted amount in the park system. I'd like to find out where that's at and to see whether or not we can supplement whatever we borrow, whenever we decide to borrow it, with that amount to build more parks, taking care of, you know, the fact that we still have to have an operating and maintenance reserve as well as our bond reserve.
Unrestricted reserve.
Unrestricted reserves, right. Unrestricted reserves, right. So my recommendation is that we do the deferred principal plan for the five point two million, but that we do it once we get our architectural plans in, our final specifications that we did, that we approved going forward with on the, on the meeting that we had where we went ahead and got a, 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 a resolution passed. And when, when, when that kind of time comes, when we get those plans, we'll have a much better feel for how much money we're going to need, and then we'll go forward with the plan of finance at that time. So we don't have to go forward now, we just, you know, right now, will we accept your report and...
Yeah, I think there are a couple of things, Judge, that you need to, because I think I get it loud and clear that whatever financing we do, that we try not to impact the tax rate. I understand that. The two things we need to, that we're going to have to take as homework is, one, looking at the park fund very specifically and see what, if anything, what, what amount of the, of the funds that are out there in reserves are either restricted or restricted, come back to you and tell you, here's a recommendation as to where we think you should be at. That's the first thing we need to do. Because of the fact that you're just about to undergo your budgetary process, I think you have your park director here, and I'm sure as any other, any other funds and any other directors, there may be some operating pressures in the park fund. So as you go through that process of budgeting, I think it's going to be at least a good month or two months to know exactly where you end up with the operating budget of that fund, and then come back and say, okay, what is the real number? I mean, by that time, we know too better.
We have a better feel for it.
Exactly. So, so that's what we'll do. Those are the two things we'll do, work, work on identifying how much are out there in reserves and unrestricted reserves, and then work with your park director and staff to, to see what the budget is going to be looking.
So what kind of a motion would we need for this?
Acknowledge it.
Acknowledge your report.
Motion by Commissioner, I second by Commissioner Amayo. I just want to make sure that we're together on this issue. I mean, do you all agree that we should go down to the five point two million without any impact on the tax rate?
Say?
Okay. Just for clarification, the five point two that you're talking about, knowing, is that includes all the other, the reserves, the funding of the reserves and all that stuff, so that essentially you're only going to mark as the five point two versus the five point seven, that the five point two worth of projects evolved into?
I think at this point...
Well, I would hope that, that we would get a report...
Sure.
And then, based on that report, adjust the numbers.
Right. Whatever it is, we don't want to impact the tax rate.
That's, that's to be more fundamental than anything else.
Well, I just, I wasn't clear, as I said, because the difference is that if a court's asking for five point two in projects, the, the, as we discussed, the cost and everything, issue costs and there was plenty of things higher than five point two.
He knows that. He knows. It doesn't matter what it is, as long as it doesn't impact the tax rate, maybe.
And, and the tax rate...
Talking semantics.
Well, no, because once one point six worth of projects, no one's talking to you.
I think we all know that.
And the projects are still in the planning stage.
And we're not issuing any bonds today.
And for that reason, we're, we're tabling.
I mean, we're good three months away from doing anything.
Acknowledging.
Is that fair?
I mean, acknowledging, acknowledging report.
Well, by the time we get three months away, we're going to be into another fiscal year.
Exactly.
And, you know, right now, we don't know exactly, according to our auditor's office, exactly where we are on balances, on income.
Exactly, exactly. And I think at the time we pull the plug, we'll be in a better position.
We don't know what plug we're pulling.
Exactly. But we were, we were not intended to do anything today anyway. That's what I want to make sure.
Yes. All right, there's a motion. Who seconded it?
I did.
Motion by Commissioner, I second by Commissioner, mind for discussion, all the present in my seat.
Aye.
Back to six, consideration possible, action granted, supplementation of fund balance for the general fund.
All right. And that is table eleven that we just gave you. There are two sheets that we gave you. One is on the bridge system fund, and the other is the general fund. And table eleven, or the item at hand is, what should we do about restoring our fund balance? And that's your savings account. The savings account, we normally refer that as a general fund balance. And the very bottom line of that spreadsheet will give you a historical illustration of where that savings account has gone to. In oh one, it was four million three three nine, and in oh two, it was five million five forty-two. Then it dropped to four million five twenty-six, three million four sixty-six, and in oh five, fiscal year end, it was two and a quarter million. When you, when you take into account what oh two was, five million five four two, with expenditures of forty-five million one sixty, you basically had a, a fund, fund balance as a, as a percent of expenditures of twelve point two percent. You divide the five point five to forty-five million, that's about twelve million two percent. Today, at two million two fifty-five, you're shy of four percent. When we talked about benchmarks, I can tell you that you are expected to be at closer to fifteen percent and not at the level that you're in. We all recognize how we got there. In fact, the credit rating agencies, who've been avid supporters of, of the county because of its growth, its competitive edge in terms of, even though you all may think thirty-two cents or the total tax rate to be, to be high, from our perspective as lenders or, or as advocates, we think you have a huge competitive edge in that your tax rate limitation can be as high as eighty cents or in some cases even ninety cents for counties. And to us, in case of some adverse economic condition or adverse weather circumstance, that being at thirty-two cents, in all the room you have to go up to eighty, that's pretty good, that's a pretty good competitive advantage. Now, we know you're not going to do that, and that's not being contemplated, but, but they recognize that. What they're saying now is, A, and in fact, when we did the borrowing last year, I believe, there were comments by Moody's and Standard and Poor's that you were expected to bring those up as soon as you had the ability to, to access some funds. I can congratulate you enough for the fact that you had a very favorable ruling. I can congratulate you in particular enough for the fact that you were persistent about getting, getting funds to, to restore not only the jail, but during the course of, you know, of, of having those adverse physical conditions at the jail, you also lost some revenues from, from a federal, the federal government or some customers, quote unquote. And that had a direct impact on general fund. And, and it's illustrated just by virtue of, of looking at that trend in the savings account. Well, that savings account, from our perspective, you must attempt to restore. And I think that because of where you are today with the results of your settlement, that I think in talking to the judge, talking to the county auditor and, and budget and staff, that you should bring it at least up to the levels that it used to be, but most importantly, it's to closer to, to the twelve percent for that matter, and actually, over the next couple of years, that you try to get up to fifteen percent of expenditures.
My recommendation is going to be that we transfer the four million, and then there's a, we got eight hundred thousand dollars, or we're going to get eight hundred thousand dollars in the sale of the right of way to the Texas Highway five eleven. I think a hundred and ten of that is going to be used towards buying the property in Port Isabel. And then we dedicate the rest of that, eight hundred thousand to reserves, which is six hundred and ninety thousand plus the four million, which would put us at close to four point eight million that we transfer to reserves. The other questions that I had was, you know...
If I may, Judge, that will basically put you at about twelve percent of expenditures, if expenditures are held online for next year versus oh six, oh five, versus oh six or about.
And if we, if we make a decision that that, we're going to dedicate that money towards that, towards the reserves, I think that that puts us in a good position. So if, if, if I can entertain a motion that we transfer the four million dollars of the, of the settlement to, immediately to reserves to replenish the fund that was lost as a result of the losses of federal inmates and, and other adverse federal government consequences that we've experienced in the last, as part of their unfunded mandate, they want us to house their undocumented workers, but they don't want to pay, pay us for them anymore. And then also, as part of that motion, that we dedicate the, the balance of the, of the eight hundred thousand dollars that we are going to receive on the, the eight hundred dollars that we're going to receive, that we're going to receive from Texas Department for the right of way acquisition of five eleven towards the reserve. That's my, my recommendation for a motion. Do I hear a motion? Can, can, I don't know, I have not had an opportunity to ask a single question in this whole discourse on item number six, and I would like to ask a few questions.
Please.
Question number one would be, what do we anticipate the fund balance to be at the end of two oh oh six? And I don't know, Javier, I mean, do you have an idea? What, what is it projected to be with the, where we are today?
Since we do have a couple of months left, I don't, I'm working on it right now and going through some...
Well, but in the approved budget that we had, okay, in the approved budget that we approved, what is the fund balance that we had on record?
That we were anticipating.
Right.
It was balanced, to remain the same.
It was going to remain at two point two?
Correct.
Right? Do you anticipate that happening? In your best judgment, you know?
Yes. Considering, well, we were running high on, on the federal inmates, the, the only question that we have right now is, is the scat funding that we did apply for and was recognized as revenue for this year, and it is being processed.
So you think it's going to stay at about two point two, more or less?
Yes.
Okay.
If that happens.
Correct.
If that happens.
But if you get the scat funding, then doesn't that cause it to go up?
Well, that's what he's saying.
No, because if you recall, there were some positions that were created in relation to those revenues being created in the DA's office for those revenues.
Which was like seven hundred thousand or something like that?
For, for next year.
Or three eighty-five for this year?
Correct.
Okay? So that's going to use up those funds.
But you're still anticipating that it'll be a...
If, yes, the auditor recognized it as revenue.
That is going to be, okay. In regards to the, and this is something aside, you know, from you, you know, that's, in regards to the revenues that we got from the jail settlement, what was, what is the total? What, do we have yet a total amount of proceeds minus all expenses that we've incurred? It's twenty-two million minus the attorney's fees plus costs. Yeah, but I, I want to net... I think it's somewhere between fif- huh? I'm sorry? Fifteen million?
How much of that is ours?
How much is ours?
How much is?
All the expenses have already been pulled out, everything's been, okay. You know, when, when we went into that lawsuit, we were going to try to recover funds to make sure that the facilities that have been paid for by publicly funded dollars, for the most part, would be put back at what they should be worth, right? I mean, we're going to use those monies to rebuild what needed to be redone. Today, we don't know what it's going to cost to bring those facilities back to the standard that they need to be doing, because we don't have a plan. We've had discussions with, with the architects. I mean, the, the twenty-two million dollars that we recovered included a recovery for attorney's fees. I mean, it was a, it was a package deal. I mean, there's a lot of elements of damages that you have when you file a lawsuit, the elements, and you can pack, and when you settle it, you, you, you don't necessarily have them broken down according to what actually you're going to receive it for. In other words, you get twenty-two million dollars, and then from there, you divide it up on however you see fit. When we, when we filed this lawsuit, we had claims for, for repairing the jail, we had claims for the losses that we incurred as a result of losing the federal inmates, we had claims for the repairs on the, on the facilities that we had on DC one, DC two in the county jail, which was upwards of two million dollars. We had claims for our attorney's fees, we had claims for the cost of the litigation, which was included there as well. And so all of that is packaged in twenty-two million dollars. How you divide it up and how, how it comes out, it, it just depends upon what you decide to use it for. What we do know is what was going to cost us for attorney's fees and the cost of litigation. But I don't think that, in talking to the architects, that we're going to have a problem with meeting the needs that we have to fix that facility with the balance that we've got of eleven million dollars after we make a transfer of four million. I mean, you know, we, look, at some point early on during the negotiations, we're willing to settle that lawsuit for five million dollars.
I think, I think transferring the four million is just basically going to cover the expenses we were out on doing DC one, two in the jail here that we had to do to get the inmates back.
Yeah, but we borrowed money to do that, John. We, we went out on COs and borrowed some money to do those repairs.
What about this?
Well, you know, we didn't borrow them from our reserve fund, we borrowed them from COs.
Yeah, but the question, but that was not your question.
If I, if I may, I think whether, the, the item at hand is, is to attempt to restore fund balance, whether you took it from here or took it from there, and you did this and you did that.
You need to go back into funding.
You have to recognize that there was a, there is an expected action from independent analysts in regards to your savings account, your general fund savings account, and whether, and I agree, Commissioner, that, that maybe you want to have an idea as to what the cost for repair is going to be, but, but the most eminent thing you have to do is recognize the deficiencies you have in, in this, in this general fund, which to us, that's, that's a more fundamental credit benchmark that you have to restore than everything else. And thus, you're expected to do something about this now. And if you're going to say, I mean, if any of you, and I'm just, and I'm sorry if I, if I'm intruding here.
That's okay.
From our perspective, you have to focus on this very fundamental credit factor. That is, your savings account is down, you have to do something about it. If in fact, repairs for all the projects that you want to take on to are going to cost, let's say, twelve million dollars, and you're only now going to have eleven, well, you have to go borrow one, okay? If you end up with nine million dollars, but you have eleven, well, that's two million extra. That's fine, but for right now, I don't want to get...
Still have to have the fund balance.
Yes.
And the point, I think the point John was making...
I just, I just want to make sure, and I think we need to do this, there's definitely, but I want to make sure that, that it's been run by legal counsel, that there's no problem with that. I just got here today, so this is the first I'm here, unless you've talked to...
I've talked to Richard, and he said that there's no restrictions whatsoever on that.
Well, my only concern is...
I just want to make sure that that's clear.
But Judge, my only concern... I was going to clarify that, because John was pointing it out, and I think you missed the point on what he was saying, correct me if I'm wrong, John. John says, look, your, your question is, well, are we going to have enough money to repair the jail? And in describing the elements of damages, we packaged all of this together. What John was pointing out was that if you're trying to figure out how much of that twenty-two million dollars is, is supposed to be to repair that jail, you figure it all, right? You figure the twenty-two million dollars, remember this facility cost us nineteen million dollars to build, you know, so we got twenty-two million dollars, and the facility's still out there, and it's still full of federal inmates and still operating. If you go out there right now, you won't tell, you can't tell that there's anything wrong with it. I mean, it looks really nice, the way it's been maintained by the current sheriff. But, but if you look at what we got and what we asked for and why we asked for it, part of what we asked for was the, the reimbursement for all the expenditures that we made to get the federal inmates back. That was a lot of money, right? And that can't be figured into that, into the cost of repairs, right? Because we asked for that separately. Part of what we asked for was all the lost revenues that we incurred as a result of... Part of what we asked for was all the lost revenues that we incurred as a result of not having those inmates for the time that we had, and then for a significant period of time of significantly less inmates that we were, had projected for. Now, obviously, the amount of money that was pulled out of the reserves is less than the $4 million. There's no disagreement with that, but we've incurred other problems based upon, you know, unanticipated losses or losses of revenue that were not figured into the revenue projections that we had and increased costs that we've had. That's impacted these general fund reserves. And that doesn't even take into consideration that we've got, you know, unrestricted reserves in the bridge system, and we've got reserves to handle operations in a large portion of our other departments. But not, that being said, the point that I'm making is that because we've lost these reserves and we have the opportunity to replace them, because we've got this money that we went out and got, then we should replace them. And if we know that we're going to go have enough money to continue our operations, you know, with the jail system and so forth, why not do that? Why not, why not continue to keep our A-bond rating even though we've, what are reserves for?
I think the problem, the whole issue I have, if we come all down to the bottom line, we've got some money sitting out here that we can transfer to reserves that we desperately need, and if we don't do it, we're going to blow that money someplace else. And we need to be real careful about how we spend reserves. We've been put in crunch situations where we had to take money out of reserves because of circumstances totally beyond our control. We need to start getting more control of these types of circumstances.
I just wanted clarification that it had been run...
Yeah, I talked to Richard about it.
As long as, as long as it went through legal...
And I talked to Trey Martinez as well, since he negotiated the settlement.
Judge, and my question was more in regards to what you keep referring to, the elements of damages, okay? All the damages that we collected for, as far as I knew, were construction damages.
No.
So all the damages, you know, I never saw any, any of the collections that we had to be other than for construction damages.
So you can ask Trey.
Our claims were for all types of damages that we incurred, lost revenues, what we had to repair with, everything else we could put in there.
And the money that we spent on DC-1.
I just don't want to shortchange the jail system also from having the product that they need to have and protecting that, because that was paid for by taxpayers' dollars.
And you know, Judge, we have to clarify, when we mean DC-10?
DC-1.
DC-1, yes. Those monies were used to upgrade the jail so we could bring in the federal inmates. And that's what we spent $2 million.
And I sat there and negotiated with the folks at Landmark, and I said, and I, that's what, those numbers were on the table with them. We said, you need to pay us back this money, because if it weren't for the fact that you built a jail that wasn't up to standards up there and we had an escape, we might have not lost our inmates, because that was a straw that broke the camel back when we lost the inmates at DC-1. But they were already upset the US Marshal's Office was, because they had, we had had an escape out of, out of Carrizal's Rocker, where they had just basically walked out on a utility room inside a jail compound. So, I mean, that was, by using a, what, a spoon, remember?
Plastic spoon.
A plastic spoon. I mean, so that, you know, that was clearly in the discussions, clearly in the discussions was attorney's fees. You know, we, that was, in fact, the attorney's fees was the deal break, one of the deal breakers that we had a year before we settled this lawsuit. When we sat down, they didn't want to pay the attorney's fees that we believed we were entitled to receive. They didn't want to pay us for the repairs to DC-1 and DC-2 and Carrizal, remember? I mean, we discussed all those things, and they said, no, and then they just wanted to give us like, you know, $3 million or something like that, and we said, no. And then we said, let's, we'll see you in court. We fought that fight, and we, I think, prevailed largely because our lawyers presented all our damages, presented the fact that this jail was not up to standards and not what we had contracted it for, and that we had suffered a significant amount of loss as a result of that, and all these elements.
Judge, and why can't we just take the money from that, you know, whatever amount you recommend that we replenish? Why can't we, take $5 million?
From where?
From the settlement. If we've got 15, take, why do we want to go to monies that we're receiving some, you know, you wanted to add 690,000 from a sale of, from right-of-way?
I think, it's like John said, if we don't, if we don't reserve it out now, we'll spend it. So let's just put it aside and submit it there?
The $800,000 is coming from the sale of...
Of the right-of-way.
And Judge, I'd like to make that a motion for that, because I got to be leaving now.
If you bought that property for $5,000 an acre, and we're getting paid how much an acre?
Don't say.
Huh? About $100,000 an acre, that's not a bad return on our investment. So...
I make a motion that we transfer the $4 million and the $800,000 for sale right-of-way.
Minus the 110.
Minus the 110, and...
So it's 400...
Immediately.
4.69 million.
And that would put us back where you would like us to be, you know?
I think where you're expected to be, not that I like you.
Well, but you're our advisor.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
You know, I mean, you're our advisor and you're given...
I'd like you to be a little higher.
That would put us at what percentage?
About 12 and a quarter percent.
12 and a quarter.
And I'd like you to be at about 15 percent.
I have a motion on the floor.
You would like us to be at 15?
A little higher, but I think forward the course of the next year, this is huge progress. I mean, I'm very pleased with that. I've already talked to the rate agencies in anticipation of this action, and they're really, really pleased about it.
I have a motion on the floor.
All right.
Appreciate your second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state of an eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
So it's 4. something million plus the 69?
No, 4 million plus the 69.
Okay.
4.69.
4.6.
Not five total?
Number seven?
Number seven. Are we at number seven?
Yes.
Well, we're at number two, actually.
Okay, we'll go to budget amendments, line items, transfer and order seller schedules.
So moved, to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Item three, approval of minutes. A, June 27, 2006, regular meeting. B, July 6, 2006, special meeting.
Commissioner, can I ask that you table those two items? Would you like it updated?
Table it.
Okay. There's a motion to table item two and three by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Garza, in favor.
Wait a minute, no, no, no.
Three A and B.
Three A.
Three A and B.
Okay.
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Garza, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Item four, approval of claims.
I have some additional claims, check number 162910 through 162926.
You handed Jaws copy of that, and you...
This is it, okay.
Well, that's fine, we don't have to...
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Garza to approve the minutes, or rather, the claims, and second by Commissioner Wood, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Not my abstention on 00162923 and file number 810.
Okay. Item seven, consideration authorization for Cameron County traffic engineer to conduct a study in speed limit for the Hunt Road.
Ted Hunt.
Ted Hunt Road. Who's here to speak on that?
I am.
Okay.
Put the item on the agenda. We've had numerous requests for higher speed limits and what exists on that road. It's a road that stretches over four miles, pretty much a straight shot with two slight curves on it that are rated for more than 30 miles an hour. Right now, it's a 30 mile an hour road. This request stems from the fact that the JP is tired of having to find people that are traveling on that road, you know, and I think a DPS agent lives on that road now, so it's being carefully watched. So he approached myself, I know he's called the judge's office also, Remy, I know he's talked to you.
Who is he?
Ortiz from Los Fresnos, JP Ortiz. And we would like to at least allow the traffic engineers to, we have, I think, an evergreen contract with the traffic engineer, right, Pete?
Actually, what we need to do is pretty simple. What Texas Department does is, on their roads, they get a non-mark unit with a radar, and they, they're out there for a couple of hours, and they measure the rate of speed of the vehicles, and then they take about 85% of that, and then they make adjustments accordingly, and then they set that speed limit at that level. On this type of rural county road, we probably need to do the same, get a radar, and go out there and measure for about an hour, and then take 85% of that, and then if we need to make adjustments, we can. We can certify it with our engineers that we have in-house, and then come to the court with a recommendation.
Okay. My initial request was to the engineers from your office, and, you know, then it was suggested that we go to the traffic engineers that we had on contract.
No, I think if we can work with the sheriff department and get a radar, you know, we can do it in-house, you know, we can do it fairly quick.
Judge, can we, can we instead of going to the traffic engineers to do the study, can our in-house engineers do the study? Would you have a problem with that on number seven?
No, why not?
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
And the signage was a problem. I saw a lot of the pictures that the JP had available, and the signage was not, was not differentiating these curves from the rest of the road.
Yes.
That was a bad...
No. Well, the reason that they're speeding more now is because it's improved.
It's, yeah, it happens all the time.
But with the motion? Yeah, and then I seconded it.
Motion, and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state of an eye. I oppose, motion carries. Nine, consideration possible action regarding new position and community programs coordinated for general probation?
Commissioner, we just have the lead judge, he placed us on to initiate the mentoring program that the county is in the process of getting a grant on, but wanting to move forward with now to put some of the framework in place. I believe, given the 10-day posting, if the commissioner's court approves a position, we need roughly $6,700, more or less to include fringe benefits. He has that within his lab salaries, and so he'd like to create the position now and then move forward with it.
Do our motion?
So there is money now?
In his lab salaries.
What's his plan for next year?
Yeah, it would be an increase to his budget next fiscal year.
Take it up?
What's the amount? 20, 38?
I'm sorry. $23,000.
Let's see.
Yeah, $23,000 is the current salary.
So about 31,000?
This is for the faith-based mentoring program that we're, we've got an application for a half million dollars to the, to the US Department of Justice on that that we're waiting to hear.
We shouldn't wait to hear from them before we do?
Well, he's hoping to initiate the process now to start, start initiating the program.
When are we expecting a response on the application request?
If I remember correctly, it was either at the end of July or the beginning of September when we were supposed to know, in August.
So it should be brought to the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
We need to be considering that in our budget.
Right. Okay, do I hear a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Commissioner Wood.
Second.
My Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state of an eye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Concern items, items 10 through 20, and travel item 21.
Judge, Commissioners Pete just asked me to take 20 out because they've already complied, so you don't need to take action on number 20.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, approve item 10 through 21, except for item number 20.
Does anybody else have any questions, concerns, comments, complaints on 10 through 21? There's a motion, is there a second to that motion?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state of an eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion, is there any supplemental items?
No.
Motion, motion to go into executive session again?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state of an eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signified by state of an eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 22, 23A, possible action on controversial court legal counsel concerning issues related to possible acquisition of real property for the dancing building renovation project. Motion, not to report.
Knowledge report, so moved.
Second.
And Remy Garza?
Remy Garza. Motion by Commissioner, who made the motion?
I did.
Tamayo, second by Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signified by state of an eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 23B, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning the possible acquisition of property. Real Hamla motion to authorize Remy Garza to begin negotiations with Real Hamla, independent school district, for the purchase of the property where the Cameron County annex in Real Hamla exists.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner...
Second.
Tamayo, second by Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signified by state of an eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 23D, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of land for proposed parking on Palomo Precinct 4. Motion to authorize the county judge to sign the contract for sale.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signified by state of an eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 23E, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of right-of-way for the West Road Project. Motion to table.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signified by state of an eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 23F, possible action on confirmed, commissioner's court legal counsel concerning status of impossibility of an appeal from administrative order to Texas General Land Office pertaining to beach use of fees. Motion to authorize the council, commissioner's court council, to submit an appeal to the General Land Office.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signified by state of an eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 23G, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of possible due for replacement of the bridge.